D A T V. And the Greater Dayton Area League of Women Voters present. Meet the candidates. Your chance to learn about the candidates running for office in the November election.
Hello. I am Peggy Ann Berry, a member of the League of Women Voters at the Greater Dayton Area. I'm here today with candidates running for the Dayton School Board. There are seven candidates running for four positions of the Dayton School Board. These candidates are Chrisandra Goodwin, Ken Hayes, Eugene Jackson, Joe Lacy, Jocelyn Reinert, Ronnie Tingle, and Karen Wick. Mr. Lacy, candidate for this position, regrets that they cannot be here because of a prior commitment.
Hi, thanks. And thanks again for having us here to talk with everyone. My name is Ken Hayes. I am an assistant professor of English at Central State University in Wilberforce, just down the road. And I have two little ones who have recently entered DPS. I work with a lot of students here at Central State who are just coming out of Dayton Public. And for me, public school education is central to a strong foundation for community. I'm a firm advocate and believer in the power of public schools. And I think that there's room for ours to do better. And I think that I have the skill set that can help make that happen. And so that's, I wanted to put my name in there and see if I can do just that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tingle, tell us about yourself and why you're running.
I have three that have graduated and I have three to go. And graduating the first three was very hard. Not enough resources for beyond school after they graduated. So, and also I've been to several board meetings, spoke at a lot of board meetings since I've been here since 2009. And just want to see if I can bring my, bring my my past careers and my skill set to the table. So hopefully can get some parent involvement at the Dayton Public School level at the board.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson?
I'm running because I believe we're about five years behind, if not 10, in producing and believing in the potential of each student that we have. I have two students that are graduating from the university, from Dayton Public Schools. I attended Dayton Public Schools, as a matter of fact, I attended Roth High School when it first opened, residence park, and then graduated from Carroll High School. My concern is the openness of the community. How much can we bring people into the schools? Why aren't more opportunities available for parents to come in and discuss what's on their mind? We need voices from the community in the schools talking about what they have to feel without feeling threatened. We also need to have vigilance with regards to the parents. What do they want? What do they need? What do they understand they can get from the schools? It needs to be very clearly understood. And we also need the point of voting. All schools are nonpartisan. They should be voting centers. They should be open for voting. They should be available for everyone. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Ms. Wick, tell us about yourself and why you're running.
Hi, everybody. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to be here. Thank you to the candidates who are here today as well. Sorry about my technical challenges in getting here. So I am Karen Wick-Gagnier. I am an incumbent for the Dayton Public School Board. And I'm running again because, yeah, in the experience that I've cultivated over the past four years, I feel like consistency of leadership is very important to the organization and the institution that we serve. I recognize that there's much opportunity to be done and things that we can do better and we will continue to drive forward to do better because we're living in an ever-changing world and an ever-changing environment. Enrollment numbers are down across the board because there are more opportunities everywhere. Overall population is down because not as many students and children are entering high schools. I think we need to do a better job identifying strategic vision with regard to education and how we move forward and how we best serve these young scholars today. I mean, the kids are different today. So I'm looking forward to continuing to doing the work there. I am a forty-two.
Ms. Wick, I'm sorry, you don't see the timer. You only get a minute with this, but thank you. Ms. Goodwin, Wine. Ms. Goodwin, please tell us about yourself and.
Chrisandra Good, okay, Chrisandra Goodwin here. I am a Dayton resident. I attended Dayton Public Schools at the elementary, middle school, and high school level. Proud alumni of Colonel High School for the Performing Arts. I am running for office because Dayton Public Schools invested a lot in me and they got me not only through a bachelor's degree, but through masters as well as a doctorate degree. And I believe that the schools need to come, we need to get ahead. We need to increase our innovation. We need to get to a place where people are excited that DPS students are winning. DPS staff, they're winning. They are excited not only about our scholastics, but also our sports. They are excited just to be in the presence of Dayton Public Schools. I believe there are a lot of great community programs that are operating not in tandem with Dayton Public Schools. And it would be great to bring those connections together to get community involved in ways that community members are already doing. I'm excited for the next four years mainly because I see the pandemic opened up a gap of what is happening in our schools and how far we are behind. But I believe we can make up that time in the next four years. So, Chrisandra Goodwin, again, I'm excited and thank you for giving me the opportunity.
Thank you. Ms. Reinert?
Thank you so much. First of all, thank you to the League of Women Voters for inviting me part of this panel. I'm honored to be joining the other people who are running for a school board. My name is Jocelyn Spencer-Reinert. I am an incumbent. I am finishing up my first term and I hope to be honored to have a second. I have lived in Dayton almost eighteen years. I am the parent of four children who attend DPS or have graduated from DPS. My oldest has graduated and is in his freshman year in college right now. I decided to run four years ago because I deeply believe in the power of public education. And as a parent of four children who are in Dayton Public Schools, I believe that we needed more parents to get involved. And I'm really proud of the work that we've done. We have a long ways to go. I'm proud of the work that we did to get out of academic distress a couple of years ago. I hold the unique position where I am a delegate for this congressional district to lobby at the state and federal level in defense of public education. And I'm just really grateful to have this position and I hope to be able to do it for four more years. Thank you.
Thank you. I will each ask the candidates the same question. You will have two minutes to speak to each question. And then I will move on to the next candidate and give them two minutes to respond. Ms. Goodwin, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing Dayton Public Schools at this time?
Always great to go first on the question, so thank you. I don't think there's just one biggest challenge. I think that would be a very simplistic way to view the district. Now, there are levels to what are happening in the districts. From the, from my standpoint, the disengagement that we have as a community in supporting our district is huge. But that's a two-way street because at the same, in the same breath, people in the community don't feel like that the schools support the community. I think there is a gap between employees feeling valued, which trickles down to employees not giving our best work and our students not getting the best version of individuals. So I think that that disconnect between management and making employees feel valued is major here. I know also when it comes to technology, technology is also a gap that I see in the schools. The pandemic made that a real reality for a lot of individuals. In the year of 2020, we were still at a point where our students haven't had laptop computers or Wi-Fi internet. And when you compare them to their neighbors in other counties, that is a Norman household where in our area, there was, there was a big gap in a large range from individuals who don't know how to use computers mainly because they don't use them outside of one set of skill sets. I mean, I think collectively, we, as a district, we have a lot of things that we have to work on, but I do think that we have the talent to work on it and bring it forward. I think we have some of the most talented and innovative teachers because you see individuals rise when they don't necessarily have all the same resources as other individuals. You see individuals rise not only in scholastics, but in athletics as well. I mean, I think our programs as a whole, we have individuals who, who need more support and not just financial support. I don't want you to get mixed that financial support is great because whenever you can give people more money for doing their job, I'm all for that always when it's available. But people need resources and tools because if you don't allow individuals to have the tools, they need to be successful, we're setting them up for failure. So I think as collectively, I told you, it's a levels problem. There's not one thing that, that is bigger than anything else. They are all connected in levels that are necessary for us to move forward.
Thank you. Ms. Reinert, the same question. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing Dayton Public Schools at this time?
Thank you for that question, Ms. Berry. I would agree with Ms. Goodwin that it's a simple answer that has a very, a simple question that has a very complex answer. You know, when I joined the board four years ago, we were facing almost immediately academic distress. Our district has only gotten F on their report card for many, many, many years. And we were under the threat of state takeover. Our superintendent and her team did a really good job on focusing on curriculum. And right before COVID hit, we had raised our district report card to a D for the very first time. And we were really, really proud of the work that we did. And then COVID hit. Right now, what we're doing is we're assessing the effects of having an almost all virtual school year last year. And we lost a lot of ground and we have to do a lot of the same things that we did before when we got ourselves out of academic distress. You know, the very first priority is making sure that we're reaching the children's academic needs. There's a lot that we have to make up for. In essence, we are in our third year of pandemic learning. Thankfully, we are back in school. We have access to vaccine for our staff and for all students who are above the age of twelve. So safety is always a concern, but it is less of a fear than it was last year. And we have a mask mandate. And so we've been doing a good job in keeping our students and staff and teachers healthy. But with that said, our second graders this year are in effect still at first grade level when it comes to a lot of things. They missed a lot of the benchmarks that they weren't able to have because they were virtual last year. We have a lot to do in regards to getting everybody up to speed and meeting the benchmarks. And then there are the larger questions about how are we communicating? How are we engaging? I love the, the fact that people are on board with the fact that we really need to dig down deep and engage with our community and let them know that they are our priority.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson, the same question. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing Dayton Public Schools at this time?
Well, after listening to the first three speakers, I don't see any. We can get along this easily on Zoom. I'm pretty happy to be able to work with anyone. Great ideas, everyone supportive of each other. That's exactly the good road. If we can get in line with the good road, we can have civility, which we haven't had in the other parts of government. We can also have protocol, which allows us to make good decisions for students and identifying student potential across the board. Resources obviously is very, very much needed. Technology, we were not ready in any way whatsoever for the pandemic at all, in any way. And that has really put our students back. What also has put them back, we had no plan to open up the schools. We opened up the schools with major academic issues, but we've got major mental issues going on. How to get along with each other? How to adjust to each other? Fifteen months away or eighteen months away from each other. We come back in and start out immediately with an academic process that did not include how do we get along with each other civilly? Which would have been an easier way of approaching academics. Count, we have two, we need two counselors at every school. Every school. We have too many issues with students that have one person try to run that. We need testing, especially with IEP students or interventions and specialists. We don't test until two months into the school. We need to get that done immediately so we can help our teachers. We have thirty kindergarten kids in a classroom with one teacher. What's this about? It's fifteen to two ratio minimum. Fifteen to two. We need to get on board with what we need to do to help teachers with the resources that we need to have immediately. We need a coffee clutch once a semester at least for parents to come in and say hi and realize that it's a community, their community, and they're welcome to be here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Ms. Wick, same question. What do you see as the biggest challenge facing the Dayton Public School systems at this time?
Well, I think, I mean, I agree certainly with all of the previous comments as well. Wonderful ideas, wonderful thoughts. And I never think we're at a loss of great ideas and thoughts. Implementing a lot of those things is, you know, can be the challenge. I think the biggest challenge I see for Dayton Public Schools in the last four years is a lot of the social, emotional competencies that our, our students and families are, are faced with. And a lot of these are barriers that continue to prohibit some of the deeper, richer learning experience. We have seventy-five kids in our preschool program right now. We have a thousand kids in our kindergarten programs. We need more of our younger students. We need to catch these families and students when these children are younger in our preschool programs and our three, four-year-old programs. So that as they enter kindergarten, first, second, third grade, the learning curve, we don't have as much work to do to catch up. Once we get the kids at a, at a, at a natural learning level by, you know, addressing some of those barriers that I talked about, I think that we need to continue to look at education in an, in an ever-changing world. So I think that, you know, we have a lot of challenges, but I think there's tremendous opportunity here as well. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tingle, same question. What do you see the biggest challenge facing Dayton Public Schools at this time?
Well, at this time, thank you for that question. At this time, the biggest issue, speaking to the parents and the, of the, of the people that are at my school and the surrounding areas is the busing. Our busing issues, being forced to our neighborhood school and not making sure that all the schools are, are equipped the same way is, has been a huge deficit in our progressions for me. I have a sixth grader and a third grader. My sixth grader is grandfathered in, but next year, my fourth grader, who has been at Ruskin for the whole time, her fourth grade year, she'll be having to start a new school because I will not be able to cross country and, you know, cause cross-town bus, I mean, transport her on my own. The biggest thing with going to my neighborhood school is not necessarily the children, but the blighted homes. There, there are so many dilapidated properties that I am just terrified for my children to walk through. And I work from nine to five, so I will not be able to transport them, you know, or walk them to school and then be home and walk them back home. So I need them to be latchkey kids. We cannot afford to do that without the busing. The other thing is the the daycare. Right now, since the buses are not running properly, they're, they're not transporting the students back and forth to, to daycare. So that's causing problems with our families and our community. The other thing is just the teachers and their supplies, them feeling comfortable, trying to do as much as they can with as little as they can. So hopefully, being on the board, listening to everybody here, I would, I would love to be able to work with everybody and, and find a solution as they come up, as we come a problem, as problems come arise.
Thank you very much, Ms. Tingle. Mr. Hayes, what do you see as the biggest challenge facing Dayton Public Schools at this time?
Thank you. I think the, the folks who have, have spoken before me have touched on a number of, of important issues and a number of big challenges facing Dayton Public Schools. To me, I think that all of those things are interconnected in, in the breakdown of communication. I, I see communication as being one of the, the primary challenges facing us. There, there are always going to be challenges with funding and things are going to pop up that we can't anticipate. You look four years ago and COVID would have been on no one's map four years ago as an anticipated challenge. But when it hit and as we dealt with the fallout and as we're dealing with the comeback, communication continues to be a difficulty, both among the, the schools and the parents and teachers and the students, but also outwardly to other institutions with other universities, with other schools and other systems to figure out what are the best ways to tackle these problems we weren't anticipating? To get word out to the parents of the successes that we have had. There are so many fantastic things that DPS has been able to do over the last four or five years that so many parents just aren't even aware of. And I think too, there are a lot of things that the school system has to be ready to say, we haven't gotten right and acknowledge and communicate those, not only in terms of admitting that we haven't gotten them right, but better communicate ways in which we plan on solving those problems. So there are always going to be many, many challenges facing a school system. Communication is key and I think that that is something that is in, in need of dramatic improvement over the next four years.
Thank you very much. Mr. Jackson, I'd like you to answer this next question first. What actions should be taken by the school board to mitigate the spread of COVID in the schools?
Well, I think the Director of Education for the United States already made that issue. And it's already up that we should all be having masks on. And we should make sure that we are as vaccinated as possible age-wise so that we can follow proper health concerns in the school district. If we followed the leadership and we had our congresspeople do something with state rights, which was a civil war issue, we might have unification across the board. Unification is what's concerning. We know by now that people even who are taking zinc and other parts of what are in the medication are still getting COVID. The people that are taking the two shots are at less risk or have headaches or mild concerns, but not death. The, and the boosters for older people obviously is important. It's not a hard line because individual rights is not about what we're talking. We're talking about health rights of everyone involved in this country. Polio shots, nineteen fifty-four. Mothers getting people on buses, taking them to the doctor to get shots. Nineteen fifty-four, they boarded them into a bus to make sure they got shots immediately. There was no question. The question is only about the past leadership we had in this country. And that question is being refuted over and over through the law cases now. And that is, there was an uncivil behavior happening prior to what's going on now. We need to be vigilant in our actions. These are children we're talking about. We're trying to help them live another day. Not maybe another day. We're trying to put them in a situation of safety for all of us to be in a better situation to understand the community that we can develop with the potential that we all have in a growing.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson.
I was on a roll.
I know. Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Ms. Reinert, the next question is what action should be taken by the school board to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in the schools?
Thank you so much for asking that question. It's really important. So I'll never forget the day that everything changed. It was March twelfth and it's the day that the governor announced, twenty twenty, sorry, March twelfth, twenty twenty. The governor announced that all the schools in the state would be shut down. And we scrambled. We had never anticipated an occurrence like that and we went virtual for the rest of the year. At that time, we did not have laptops and Wi-Fi for everybody. And when the next school year started, we made the determination, as much as we didn't want to be virtual, all the districts around us were in person. It was not safe for students, staff, and teachers to be in person. So at that point, following the recommendations of the county health commissioner, we went virtual until March first of twenty twenty-one. When we went back, we tried for two weeks to do hybrid learning and there were COVID cases that popped up really quickly and it was really detrimental to the health of our district. Over the summer, I asked that we have the health commissioner come in before school year started so we could make a determination about masks. As soon as we were able to get the vaccines in February, we, we were able to get those available to all of our teachers and staff. And so as many people as wanted to get the vaccine, we're able to get them. And then in the summer, we made a determination shortly before the school year started by listening to the county health commissioner, inviting him back. And we had him again just at the last board meeting. And he recommended to us that the best course of action was to have a mask mandate for the entire district in every single building for teachers, staff, and students regardless of vaccination status. We listened to him. We had a really good conversation. We're still taking as much social distancing precautions as possible. There are a few cases, but if you look at the cases in Dayton versus the districts around us that do not have a mask mandate, we've managed to keep our district remarkably healthy. We sent out notices and we enforced quarantine. But what we're doing is we're listening to the experts, the public health experts. And I'm really proud of how we've been able to navigate that.
But thank you. Mr. Hayes, same question. What action should be taken by the school board to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in the schools?
Yeah, thank you. This is obviously still weighing very heavily on parents and teachers and the community at large. And, and I think that to our credit for Dayton Public, they, they did institute the masks from the get-go. And I think as Ms. Reinert just said, the results bear out. If you compare to the other school districts around us and, and look at those who have not implemented masks versus Dayton Public, we haven't had any shutdowns. We haven't had any major outbreaks. And, and so I think that is one thing that we have gotten right in this process is listening to the experts regarding how we go forward dealing with the pandemic. And I think we need to continue to do that. Obviously, as we learn new information about variants and a number of different things that we learn about vaccines and those, the effectiveness of the vaccines, we have to take those into account. And sometimes that may require us to shift gears and make different decisions. But I think that on the whole, listening to the experts in terms of the medical advice is, is the way to go. I think we also need to be prepared for the students who can't be there as a result of a positive test or, you know, having to quarantine because they were near someone who did. And making sure that they have access to the technology and the resources to keep up with their peers when they can't be in the classroom. I think that we can't just look at it in terms of what's going to happen in class for the hope that we don't have the outbreaks. But how do we respond to the possibility of the outbreaks happening and the students individually who may fall behind because they have to be at home? So prioritizing resources to making sure those students are, are kept up.
Thank you very much. Ms. Tingle, the same question. What action should be taken by the school board to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in the school?
Um, that's a great question. Personally, I, I would say that what they're, what they've done has been remarkable. I salute everyone that, that was on board with keeping the mask on all the children. I have an asthmatic child that is always has COVID-like symptoms this time of year. So she's always sick, so I pull her out of school. But my other child is a straight A, perfect attendance student. And he got called in and said that he was sitting right beside a child that had COVID, right beside him, same desk and everything. But since he had a mask on, he didn't have to quarantine. I was a little fearful for that because just because my son didn't get it doesn't mean he can't come home, take his mask off, feel comfortable around at home and pass it to his sister. So I think that there is a little bit of issue with not quarantining the people that are directly beside someone. But the way they've been doing it has been okay, at least telling me. So I would kind of keep that child away from everyone else in the home. That is just communication. We have to make sure that we're able to communicate with the parents. The biggest thing that was wrong with virtual was that there was nobody to call. The teachers were overwhelmed because they continued to keep thirty-something kids in this class when your art and math, your music and some gym teachers are also teachers. They just teach gym, but they can actually teach anything. So if you would have gave them classes that you could have spread out the classroom sizes online, then I think that our virtual would have been a little bit different. So we need to have a better plan, a better, better circumstances. The computers need to be up to code, up to date. I had, I had four laptops. Some were touchscreen, some weren't. If you know computers, if they're not touchscreen, most likely they are five years outdated. So hopefully that's the question.
Thank you. Ms., I'm sorry, Mrs. Reinert. I've asked you the question already. Ms. Goodwin, the question is what action should be taken by the school board to mitigate the spread of COVID-19 in the schools?
I think the school board is in a very unique position because traditionally, the school board operates at a high level.
because traditionally the school board operates at a high-level place, but we aren't living in traditional times. So the school board is going to have to stay alert and stay innovative on what's going to happen tomorrow. Because whatever, what they're currently doing today may not address tomorrow. And that can be a new variant comes out that we don't know what to do with. I think you have to share the plan on how you're going to move forward. And when I say share the plan, it can't just be isolated to add a board member. You have to put the plan in ways that people can understand, whether that's in infographics, whether that is in little mini-series, whether that is in town hall Zoom meetings. You have to keep telling people what's going to happen. I think also too, you have to be, you have to face the realities that the mask mandate is great. I support it because it's the least invasive procedure right now, right, that's going on. But the reality is when you have children in kindergarten and up, they don't really respond if they can't see your facial clue. So continuing to think about ways to help our teachers be able to overcome those barriers and keep kids safe. And that's if we have to give them clear masks, if we have to put them in, get little face screens for them so they can see, but being willing to adapt to those type of things. Also, you have to look at making sure that these masks, as we move forward, are comfortable. I tell parents all the time, if the ears are too uncomfortable, the loops on your ears, get your child a gayer. They'll feel like a ninja. They'll feel like they're playing dress up. And they'll be a little bit more willing to wear those type of masks as you go through. I think that's important. And I also think we have to talk about the vaccine more with individuals. I think it's been such a divisive issue in our country that at this point, it has become a, just a divisive conversation. As a community, you have to understand why people are resistant. And then you got to talk to them and give them opportunities to keep talking and go, all right, well, let me bring some people in and let's see if we can work through this. I think collectively, we have to be forward-thinking and ready to move forward.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin. Ms. Wick, same question. What action should be taken by the school board to mitigate the spread of COVID nineteen in the school?
Thank you. I'm super proud of the work that we've done as the current board responding to this pandemic. I mean, I can't name a school around that will have higher test scores as a result of their students going through a pandemic. And I know we had a lot of challenges with regard to online and that sort of thing. But overall, I think that we've done an excellent job. I think most recently, starting the school year with the mask mandate, not even really thinking about it that it was the right thing to do, an error on the side of caution right now is the most important thing, following the science and working with our local CDC. I think our director has actually commended Dayton Public Schools for being very forthright about wearing masks right away. So I think we have to continue to do that. I do think we have to continue to meet people where they are and address the fears and the anxieties around vaccination, but continuing to impress the importance of that and communication. Our PIO team has done a good job pushing out messages on social media as to our expectation and what is going on in schools. And I think we just have to continue the forward-thinking work that we've done. And I'm super proud of that and follow the science. So thank you for your time.
Thank you. This is the last question. Renee, I'm going to start with you. What should the school districts do to improve civics education so that the students will be more informed voters?
I definitely love that question. Something I've always asked is if we could start earlier. I know we have some citizenship, like little things that were like incentive-based type things when they were like in second and third grade. But I really think that it should be a part of our history classes. I would love for them to actually make history a class, not just a part of English or science shouldn't be just a part of math, but to teach us how to, how the actual processes work, what the legislative, you know, like how does this work? How does the police, how are the police involved on us? How, what the police roles are, then what the lawyer, what a judge, what is a commissioner? What is the mayor? Like this, this time, me trying to run for this office has enlightened me to where I'm remembering back to twelfth grade when I learned all this crammed into one year, where it should have been something that I grew up with all along. And then when I got to twelfth grade, it should have just been a recap of why people were nationalized, how people come to the United States and become citizens, how there were immigrants before, and now it seems like you can't be an immigrant now. Just different, different things like that. But I think the biggest thing is educating early, starting that curriculum earlier. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Ms. Reiner, what should the school district do to improve civics education so that students will be more informed voters?
I think that's a really good question, and I'm really grateful that you asked it. I will never say that we're doing everything perfectly and that we're doing everything right. And there's always room for improvement. There is a wonderful program that a friend of mine just passed to me that was started by some founding, some strong leaders in the community in the Dayton Unit and double ACP that really dives deep into teaching children civics. I would disagree that we're not teaching children how to be involved in government and history. I've seen the most amazing wave of student activism in the high schools over the past couple of years. There have been walkouts over gun violence and the threat of violence in schools. One of the, I attended a graduation ceremony at the end of the school year last year. And all the students cheer when the teachers are announced. But the biggest cheer was for the government and civics teacher. And it was wonderful to see the way that the children really responded to that. I do think though, that we really need to be intentional about the ways that we're working with our community. Right before COVID hit, I had the idea that we should have voter registration forms. When you go into any school office, when you go into the office and you pull your child out, there should be a stack of voter registration forms and you can just take one and register yourself to vote. I think that's a really good way to make sure that not only are students involved in the process of getting themselves registered to vote, but parents can do that also. Unfortunately, COVID hit and, you know, we don't let anybody that is not student or staff into our school buildings right now out of an abundance of caution. That's an idea that I have on the back burner. We really do, are very intentional about the way that we teach history and the way that we teach civics to our students. I'm really grateful for the opportunity that I have every October to do a march to the polls with Commissioner Mims. It's a wonderful thing that he does, and I'm grateful for the activism that I see in our student body.
Thank you. Ms. Wick, what should the school district do to improve civics education so that the students will be more informed voters?
Thank you. Yeah, I have two kids that graduated from Dayton Public Schools who are very civic-minded and very social justice-oriented. And as a result of their education at Dayton Public Schools have really benefited in their civic responsibility and leadership. So I think that we're doing a good job. I think there's always room for improvement. One of the things that I did as a parent when the kids were in elementary school was I did, I had voting at their school. And I set up voting booths and we worked with local organizations. So it really seemed like a real voting opportunity. And the little kids were super excited about that because I think we can all remember, I hope that we all remember that moment in time where we had the, we earned the privilege of being an eighteen-year-old and being able to go cast our vote for the first time and how impactful that is. And that kids, we should continue to enforce the messaging that we all play a part. We all have, we all have choices and rights to make decisions. And we do that and we cast our votes in support of what we feel is our responsibility to move our, our, our community, our country, and our nation forward. So I think that we just have to keep evolving with our young students and continuing to work on how we can best engage them to encourage them and uplift them. So it's a wonderful thing to have the privilege to vote, and they should understand that. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Goodwin, what should the school district do to improve civics education so that students become more informed voters?
Oh, I like to disclose that I'm an attorney, which means I went to law school, graduated past the bar. But I'm going to tell you guys, in the nineties, there was this thing out that was called Schoolhouse Rock that at one point in my law class, I had to talk about how Bill became a law. And I was able to tap back into something from my childhood that was imprinted in me at an early age. And I think those type of tools, like traditional conversation, yes, as you get older, it's easy to have dialogue and talk and go through this. But when you are younger, it has to be interesting. Hamilton is one of, Hamilton made me interested in Alexander Hamilton in a way I never thought I would be interested in Alexander Hamilton. And it brought to life information that I had to go look up to go, oh, is this true? And is this false? But being able to tap into arts, especially when you are dealing with younger children, it will lead to, as they get older, to be able to engage in a more in-depth conversation. In high school, my government teacher, still around in committee now, Derek Malone, he made us debate each other on topics, topics that you generally wouldn't talk about. It was the first time in my life that I actually had a debate that wasn't with a sibling or a friend. And that was on something I had to research. And I think those type of programs are necessary. Dayton Public Schools actually used to have a, they started one with the middle school age kids, which I thought was a great program to introduce them to having healthy debates. It's okay to disagree and have to take different sides and then challenge yourself like that. So I think really attacking civics in a non-traditional way is going to be the key to get individuals to start thinking bigger and broader about it. When I was in high school, my school was on the chopping block. And my entire school marched to the Board of Education, which now, as I'm older, I think we were a lot closer than going from Colonel White all the way downtown because that seems like a long walk. But we did those type of things because we were a part of something. And again, it's that foundation of you can actually make change when you do stuff. If you put it, if you give kids an opportunity, they'll move forward.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes, same question. What should the school districts do to improve civics education so the students will be more informed voters?
Yeah, this is, this is an important one that, you know, I think that this is ultimately what we're trying to do, right? To get our students to be engaged in their communities and to know these sorts of things. And so this is one where two minutes isn't nearly enough time to go into everything that we could. But I think, you know, in sort of the quick blush of it, I think one of the things that we've pushed for over the last decade or so is getting STEM sort of embedded into all of our classes in various ways, whether it's English or history or whatever it may be. And I think that a similar push needs to be done for civics education, where when you have a math class, talk about vote count and vote tabulation and things like that. When you're doing your history class, that's an obvious one. When you're doing your English classes and they're writing their essays or reading their books, don't just do book reports on literature, but bring in I Have a Dream speech and break those down and have argumentative essays that they write instead of simple book reports. So I think that there are ways that you can embed those conversations into the classroom itself. But I think too, for a lot of our students, when they're done with school at DPS, they're done with having folks be those sort of pushes to that sort of engagement. And so those eighteen years are when we have the chance to model it as teachers, as administrators, as a board. And I think having more opportunities or taking more opportunities to celebrate as a board, the students who are engaging and make a display of those things, to have school-run Rock the Vote programs and doing those sort of voter registrations and things like that. And when you have teachers and administrators who are getting out into the community, celebrating them for their action and getting into those things. So I think there are ways to put it into the classroom, but also ways for us to model it out of the classroom.
Thank you very much. Thank you. Mr. Jackson, the same question. What should the school districts do to improve civics education that students will become more informed voters?
You should lobby all six of us to be on the same board together. I think we could get a lot done. That's the first thing. The other point is I agree with several candidates regarding voting and which was my, one of my first statements that I made, which is that we should have voting, all the schools should be voting stations, polling stations so we can bring students in at eighteen, register them, get them set up. We should also make sure if they're polling stations, the school should be closed the day of voting. What is it open for? If we're on Levy's Pass, why don't we close the schools? That should be a holiday and it should be, well, the Congress is working on, well, let's hope the Congress is working on something right now to get that enacted, but they said they were working on it. The other part is we have buses to pick people up. We have routes that we go. Now, there must be a way of using these buses. Some must be some way legally, since we have an attorney, Ms. Goodwin, who could represent this. Let these buses be loose, paid for, pick up at the stations people that can't get there and make voting reality instead of making it so hard on people that are in situations that just don't have the comfort that all the people in Congress have with all the salaries we pay them. That's the one thing we could do, which would make it nice. It was good that she brought up Hamilton. But when we think of Alexander Hamilton Stevens, we think of the cornerstone speech, what he did on page eight to define what he thought the South was about. Pretty sad, but it's also history and it should be taught. And we don't do enough of the reality of teaching or even in terms of literature. We talk about what Hemingway did in his relationships with people, not the beautiful writing he did, but how he lived and the tortures that he put people through, his relationship. We don't teach the reality of if we all have a flaw, does it define us or allow us to succeed?
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. In closing, we would like to provide each candidate with a minute for a closing statement. I will start with Ms. Reiner.
Well, first of all, thank you so much for the opportunity. I'm so grateful for being able to join you. I think the League of Women Voters panel that you do every election cycle is really, really important. And I'm always really excited to join you. Thank you so much for my fellow candidates who are joining me. Thank you to everybody who's watching to this and listening to this. If anybody has any questions about how they can reach me, my website is jocelynreiner.com or you can find me on Facebook. I'm more than happy to answer any questions that you might have. I'm just so grateful for the last four years and I'm humbled by the chance to be able to serve the community. I'm looking forward to doing it for four more years. I'm grateful for the work that I've done, but I am cognizant of the fact that there's still a lot more work to do. Thank you again for everybody watching. You have four votes on November second. I hope you vote and I would like you to choose me as one of your votes. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Tingle.
I just want to thank the League of Women Voters for recognizing me as a candidate, as a write-in candidate, that someone's going to have to just not only be present, but actually do a few more steps to write me in or any of the other write-in candidates. I love all the people that are on the school board because you have given your time and your effort. And it's mostly a volunteer thing. You are there because you truly are involved with the community and our children. I just feel like right now, I, this is the time for me. I think that me being close to my parents, close to my students, being a coach, being a mentor, trying to teach children how to mentor, I feel like I need to be on the school board. So write in Ronnie Tingle, your next school board candidate. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Hayes?
Yes, thank you to the League of Women Voters, to all the candidates, to the folks who are taking the time to listen to us talk. You know, this is, this is not a thing where we are the ones up here and we end up being the sole distributors of all this. It's the community engagement. It's that communication between all involved and making sure that our teachers are supported so that they are there for our students. I believe that communication is one of my skills. I believe that I am someone who is willing to take the time to hear all parties involved and to think about what everyone brings to the table and utilize those ways to help everyone move forward and solve problems. So I'm also on Facebook and you can get me on social media at KenHayes386. And I appreciate the time of everyone. Thank you. And please write in Ken Hayes in November.
Thank you. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you so much, League of Women Voters. I want to let you know that I do read the articles every year. So I am a proponent of trying to figure out exactly who everyone is when I read them and if they, how, what they have to say about themselves. Thanks so much for this opportunity. It was nice being with six dedicated people who are really thinking about what we can do to move forward in education. We have so many things that we can do for students and we need to really understand that the community really needs to come together and feel good about each other in the community, that everyone in the community has something to give, believing in each other. Believing in each other, believing the opportunities that we have will allow us to grow, not nitpicking at each other constantly. And we all have something to give, even those that may be coming out of an institution. Believe in yourself and what your potential is. You can share, vote, jackstar, J-A-K-S-T-A-R-R at yahoo dot com. Write my name in, thank you.
Thank you. Mrs. Wick?
Thank you. Thank you, League of Women Voters, for your continued service to our community and your mission of uplifting our civic responsibility and people. So I appreciate you. I am a write-in candidate, Karen Witt-Gonay. I respectfully asking for you to write me in on November second. I believe I'm a trusted and consistent member of the current Board of Education. I'm a longstanding Dayton business owner, I'm a proud parent of two DPS alumni and I'm deeply rooted in our community. I'll continue to bring transparency and empathy to the board and I am excited about the opportunity to continue to do the work. I believe the four-year experience that I have has given me a tremendous lens to move the organization and the institution forward. So I appreciate all of the attendees today and these potential board candidates. I think we all sound like excellent candidates and I wish you all the very best of luck. Thank you again.
Thank you, Ms. Goodwin.
I'm excited. Thank you for the opportunity and I'm hopeful that if nothing else comes out of this conversation, a lot of people go vote. Just get out there, you know, just vote, just read them, check us out. Everyone has given you their sites. My site is www.cassandragoodwin.com. Please, please connect with me, talk to me. I am more than willing to talk about anything because I have a lot of ideas and I have a lot of feelings because I'm a millennial and that's just how we are as people. I'm excited for what's coming in the next four years. I mean, I think as everyone has said, there are a lot of brilliant minds on this conversation right now. And I am just hopeful that I will be one of the four that you pick to move forward in the process of representing DPS students. I've also, I've been a student, I've been a teacher and in the circle of life, it would be awesome to now be a board member and go, oh yeah, I know what all that feels like because I've been at every level of DPS, so that's great. I've said it already, I am an attorney right now. I've worked in the private sector, I've worked in the public sector. I bring a lot of experience and I'm just excited to see what happens next. Thank you.
Thank you. And thank you all for your participation today. Good luck with your campaigns. The League of Women Voters encourages all candidates to run an issues-oriented campaign. Our goal is to educate the voting public and strengthen our elective political process. The Annual Voter Guide will be distributed in mid-October in the Dayton Daily News, AIM Media, Suburban Newspapers, the Yellow Springs News, Lug Van Gordia and at local libraries, schools and businesses. Early voting for upcoming election occurs October fifth at your Board of Elections or you can request an absentee ballot. However you decide to vote, your opinion matters and it helps make our democracy work.